So bringing the meeting to order on July 6th. Thank you for all who are here participating. It's not the usual crowd. We usually have larger attendance, but we thank you for coming out anyway. We have a public hearing on the agenda for this evening, which involves Section 250-41 of the Chapter of the Village Code. And this is to modify the process by which a nonconforming use in a residential district is terminated.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to hand the floor to Mr. Egan. He'll give you the schoolbook version and the layman's version, so everybody can understand why we feel it's necessary to change this section of code.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of the Board, Trustees, Members of the Republic. This is amending 250-41, which is a very unique corner of the zoning code of the Village of Port Jefferson. In a nutshell, there's a concept called nonconforming uses. Nonconforming uses are when the surrounding area is rezoned to something else, leaving a legacy parcel with the previous use continuing. That property owner has a vested right, the courts have held they have a vested right to continue that nonconforming use. Forever, essentially. In the 1970s and early 80s, there was a change to the law and the concept of zoning, and the courts have upheld it, that they understand that nonconforming uses are supposed to go away. So they proposed putting on an amortization period on nonconforming uses, which gave an artificial timeframe to stop. And the courts have said, if you give a reasonable amortization period to allow that property owner to run out their vested right, they will uphold the termination of that nonconforming use. And then on that nonconforming use, the property would then revert to some conforming use in that zone. A nonconforming use amortization is an artificial timeframe. And the courts have said you have to give a long enough time period for that property owner to get the reasonable return of the value of their property. In that time period, the Village of Port Jefferson gave a very generous amortization period of 40 years for some of these uses. Lo and behold, 40 years has come, and there are nonconforming uses that are now subject to this amortization timeframe, this artificial window close, that really is, in the opinion of the Village Attorney's Office and the Village Department of Recreation and the Board of Trustees, really unfair for this nonconforming uses to be artificially terminated. Now, the question becomes, well, what about these nonconforming uses? What is the plan to allow these nonconforming uses to actually end? Well, the other villages have not been then as innovative to put on the amortization time period, sometimes they did, and sometimes not, but they allow the nonconforming use to then be eliminated because of the own change in circumstances on the property. So for instance, if you cannot, what's called intensify a nonconforming use, if you intensify a nonconforming use, that evaporates it. If you abandon a nonconforming use for more than a period of time, in the Village of Port Jefferson, it's one year, if you abandon that nonconforming use, meaning you walk away from it, then you come back and say, oh, I want that, really want that to be restored, that nonconforming use has been abandoned. So there still are naturally evolved amortization periods, you could say, on the nonconforming uses to end them, but the proposal tonight is to eliminate the 40-year timeframe completely, not have it make reapplication. So if a nonconforming use doesn't trigger one of those other situations, which is, again, whether it's not intensified, whether it's not changed substantially, whether it's not damaged more than 50% by fire, whether it's not abandoned, if you remain exactly how it is, and it's been a stored nonconforming use, it'll continue as a legal nonconforming use. That's the whole, eliminate the artificial amortization window.
Thank you, Brian. We discussed this earlier, the board. Does the board have any questions or comments, understanding? Okay, so open it up for public comment. Amal.
Hi.
And just for the, you have to state your name and address for the record.
Well, Anathkarzai, 318 East Broadway. Could you spell that, please? The first and last name, A is an Al, N is an Mary, A-L, K-A-R, Z-A-I. It sounds like you have specific properties in mind, and I'm guessing you're not talking about residential?
Correct. Residential generally is a conforming use in its zones. There could be some examples of residential uses that are in, say, a commercial zone, that would be a nonconforming use, but it's very rare that it's actually a residential use. Generally is a, historically as areas evolve, it generally is a leftover commercial property in a residential, surrounded by residential property. That's generally what they are. So a legacy commercial use in a generally residential area. So very rarely is it a residential area in reverse in a commercial area.
Okay. It just, it sounded like it was specific properties in mind, is that the idea?
There are some, we do have some illustrations that where this is happening and getting close. So we do, there are examples of it, but they are very, very rare, because in 40 years, generally some people have to with that property. You're going to want to put a second floor on, you're going to want to change the parking. If you do any of those things, that would be an inappropriate intensification of a nonconforming use, and that would cause that nonconforming use to last.
Good questions.
Oh, actually, one more, out of curiosity, because I don't know how the rules, when something is labeled historic, I know that it has a separate set of, you know, things that you can and can't do, for example, and does it pertain?
That's a good question. I would probably say that in that instance, if it's historic property, there are different regulations that would govern what you can and cannot do, and those regulations would actually keep that to become, to not allow a nonconforming use to get any worse, because you're going to keep it kind of frozen in time. If you were to add, say, a kitchen or something in the back, or some major expansion to a total property, number one, it probably wouldn't be permitted, then that's something, what the purpose is, of keeping it exactly how it is, kind of frozen in time. And that's what nonconforming uses are. If they're frozen in time in that use, they'll be tolerated if they stay exactly as they are. And that's what the proposal is tonight, is to revert back to that frozen-in-time concept and eliminate this artificial cutoff, this guillotine period of the amortization.
And I just want to expand on that comment a little bit more, because it's only if you are in a, if your property isn't registered on the historic, New York State Register of Historic Places, you have usually those restrictions, that say you can't modify the building at all, its color, you know, the materials. There are a lot of historic buildings in our historic district, downtown, High Street, and they have little plaques. Those are just little plaques that are given to them by the Historical Society, that does not restrict their ability to be used for, you know, residential or expanded on or painted, whatever color or used materials. The A R C, Architectural Review Committee, can guide people, but a lot of times people think historic means that there's going to be a lot of constraints or restrictive covenants that prohibit what that building may or may not be able to look like. Anyone else from the audience want to comment on the nonconforming use as it's presented?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing. Second, is there a second? Second Trustee Snaden. All, so moved, all in favor? Aye. Motion to pass. Mayor Garant, second by Trustee Cassay, all in favor? Five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to give the Code Enforcement Bureau, and Suffolk County is also coming down. Mr. Cairns, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome too.
For Amal's concern about public safety to be addressed. Oh, Sergeant Elton, how are you?
Lieutenant Elton.
Lieutenant, I apologize. Promoted.
The Chief is sorry that he's unable to make it tonight.
That's okay. Listen, there's been a lot of confusion about the dates and the change of the day of the meeting, et cetera, et cetera. So we're fortunate to have you. Want to come forward? We just, I think we have one only, one concern about public safety.
One?
Well, I don't know. Is there, are there any other members of the audience that want to address Lieutenant Elton?
I think Amal's issue has to do with Suffolk Police.
Okay.
So we might want to wait until Suffolk arrives.
Okay. So anybody, usually we have a code enforcement officer to talk about any issues regarding the village code. Again, I have very light participation tonight, so that's why I'm trying to make sure. Jen, you're good? You're good, okay. All right.
You were waiting before me.
Okay.
Standing before me.
Okay. So we'll move on to then trustee reports, and I'll start, I'll start with trustee Laux, all the way to my far left.
I'll start with the Country Club. We just completed our annual Mayor's Tournament. I want to read off the winners of the Mayor's Tournament. Bob Woods, Bill McCourt, Rick Ledoux, Dan Ricardo, Dave McGilvery, and Ray Somerstat are the winners of our Mayor's Trophy this year. Very nice. This coming weekend, we will begin the annual President's Cup Tournament. This is a partners event for the men's club. As I have announced previously, the membership of the Country Club has had a huge increase this year. Tennis has gone up to 284 members from 210 last year. Today, we broke 600 in the golf membership. We have 604 golf members. Last year, we had 487, to give you an idea of how much of an increase. If anyone is looking to become a new member, we're going to be running our annual Early Bird Membership Drive immediately after Labor Day. This is a membership where you can sign up now and become a member for the months of September, October, November, and all of next year. It's a pretty good deal. A reminder to all non-resident golf and tennis members, they all need a parking permit. If you haven't picked one up, they're available in the membership office. We also are marketing our lockers this year. We have many lockers available for both guys and gals. We have a couple of projects in the works up at the golf course. At present, we're asking, I hope, for bids for the driving range. We're also looking to add small patio areas to the par-three holes. These patios contain pavers, brick pavers, with the names of those people who have gotten a hole-in-one on that hole. It's kind of a nice touch to the par-three holes. Little news from the Village Center and the Recreation Department. Things have pretty much returned to normal now, after what we've been through for the last year and almost a year and a half. We're back to renting all of our rooms for parties, meetings, or special events. The farmer's market is now outdoors for the entire season. The Jill Russell Stage, which is located at the eastern end of the Jean Garant Harborfront Park, is now available for use. If you have an organization that wants to hold a, any kind of an event, a musical event or an acting event, you need to sign up for this stage at the Village Center. Both of our beaches, east and west, are now open with lifeguard coverage seven days a week. If you haven't been down to our east beach, it's like a brand-new beach. We actually have sand on it this year. New to the east beach is a snack bar that's open five or six days a week, depending upon the weather. Opens at noon, will stay open as long as business is there, usually around 6:00 in the evening. We have numerous recreation tennis, golf, camp, and swim programs available for youngsters and adults of all ages. If you're interested in any of these programs, you can visit our website, or you can visit the Village Center, where there's a more complete list. I have noticed that many of our kayak racks are empty. I would ask that if you do not intend on using your rack or your space, please notify us, because we do have a waiting list. Thank you. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Stan. Continue with Rebecca Cassay.
Thank you, and thank you, trustee Laux, for all of that. You're listing all, some of our favorite things in the village here, so thanks for making those happen, along with the village staff. So for the Conservation Advisory Committee, for which I'm the liaison, we are wrapping up our work on the tree permit and code revisions. The CAC has decided to put forth their recommendations in sort of plain language, and as their liaison, I will be working with legal for the village, meeting with them later this summer, to work on the code language that will help to implement a, you know, the code language and put that in, so that is something I'm looking forward to doing, so that we can work to find that fine balance between protecting the village's great trees and also, you know, making it easier for homeowners to do tree work, you know, appropriate tree work on their properties. The Conservation Advisory Council will next be working with, alongside the Architectural Review Committee on a very exciting project, giving a little bit of a facelift to the, to the building guidelines, which are solid, but a little, you know, need a little updating for the current century, so we are going to be adding some green, green aspects to those. So for new projects coming in, or major projects coming across the planning department, there will be guidelines, these guidelines are given out to all of those builders, and so the CAC wants to add green building components, sort of like that, you know, some aspects pulled from LEED standards, as far as plantings go, encouraging native plantings and plants that will absorb water to help with our stormwater, things like this. So that's a project they will be looking at for the coming months. The community garden is thriving and full, and we're so excited to have our 20 gardeners, 20 sets of gardeners there. We have everyone in, and the programming will be starting there at the garden later this month. The programming is open to not just the gardeners with beds there, but also anyone in the community, Port Jeff residents and non-residents as well. So to learn more about individual programs, what they are and what they are, you can sign up at portjeff.com/communitygarden. There's a mailing list there, so please check out that list. The programs will be anything from general tips for home gardeners to seed saving and other home gardening programming. I continue to work alongside the mayor and other members of the CAC and experts in the village on a climate resilience plan. The village was given a large grant, and so we're, the RFP is now open, so we have a request for proposals for, you know, contractors to come and create a plan for us, an actionable plan, taking sort of all the sketches of plans that the village has, to do things like daylighting the culvert over near the fire department, maybe greening the area along our harbor front, and really make some actionable plans for us to then use to go and get grant money for that. So very honored and excited to be working on that. The RFP closes at the end of this month, and we'll, the committee will review those in early August. And that's my report.
Thanks, Rebecca. Can tell she's our environmental wonk on the board. Moving to my far right, trustee Miller, please, your report.
Good evening. I want to report, I had attended a wake for Brian Kelly just before the meeting here, and he's, of course, passed away. Brian and his wife Karen were kind of...
Just push the mic, please.
...frequent attenders to board meetings, and I just wanted to make that known, you know, if any of you know Brian or Karen, you may want to express your sympathies to them. So in other business, I have been trying to get a Zoom or other meeting with Long Island Railroad executives. I've been talking with Mr. Nick Visano of the Long Island Railroad. We'd like to speak with Phil Ng, Mr. Ng, the CEO. We're kind of moving along. Basically, the first requests that we made were that we're broke and we don't have time. Now, we're starting to talk about having an actual meeting. We have a number of issues in Port Jefferson for the present and the future. Electrification is an obvious issue that we would like to see in the future, and we'd like to get on the first rung of that ladder where you're moving upward instead of constantly at ground level where no progress is made. Some of the issues that we have prior to COVID, there was a proposal to replace existing diesel engines with more diesel engines. And what that is, is a guarantee of terrible service for the future. Right now, as probably you are all aware, you get on the Long Island Railroad in Port Jefferson, and you have to get off at Hicksville or Huntington and get onto another train that is electric that can go into Jamaica or Penn stations. They are doing some experimenting on the Oyster Bay Line with battery, electric power, which is to say that they would run under third rail electric, and when they come to a diesel portion of the line, they would have stored energy in the batteries, and that would carry them forward. And so in asking for a meeting, I advocated suggesting that this would be a very good idea, possibly a solution to our scheduling problem. We're also looking at the fact that a lot of residents, the number that I'm getting is about 60% of 11777 and 11776 commute on the Long Island Railroad, but they take, they commute to Rockcockhamas Station first, which is very un-green. And we're being told that we don't have enough ridership to sustain the electrification process, but if everybody's going to where there is an electrical connection, that's a whole other thing. So we've kept Port Jefferson Station Chamber of Commerce in the loop, and the Port Jefferson Station Terrival Civic Association, as well as the Sierra Club, which is very much in favor of this. Just to rehash, a few weeks ago, Margo and I had a Zoom conference with Thomas Falcone, who is the head of LIPA. We wanted to emphasize that we have a positive disposition towards citing future electrical projects in Port Jefferson. Very possibly as early as like 2025, decisions could be made to discontinue some power plants, which to discontinue then would be to eliminate the revenue of taxation from those, for those plants. We're looking at battery projects. The state will be issuing a number of battery contracts, and we would hope that they would want to put that there. It's very clean. And that's essentially that. We, we kind of questioned their figures of all the, we are Area K in the New York ISO, which is the New York grid. We are the only one in the grid, the only area that is projecting a downturn in the use of electricity on Long Island. Now, the gross domestic product of Long Island is increasing over time. Also, there are increased uses of electrical vehicles. General Motors and Ford have committed to this in the future. Volvo is going to go all-electric. Jeep is coming out with electrical vehicles, so we're just, just kind of questioning those figures, wondering why we would be seeing a decline in energy. And so that's my report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Deputy Mayor, say.
Thank you, Mayor. The school had, has had their graduation and prom. Things were pretty much back to normal. The graduation was able to allow full capacity outside. We had beautiful weather and many attendance, family and extended family. It was a beautiful ceremony, and everyone was pleased to see that. The prom was as usual, except at a separate location. It was held at the Meadow Club, just outside of the village, and that was a wonderful event as well, and I'd like to publicly thank all of the parents and the committees that were able to make that, that event happen as beautifully as they did. With code and public safety, I have been taking some time to meet personally with residents that have had concerns, so I'd like to also let everyone know, anyone that has a concern that they didn't want to bring to a public meeting, please reach out to me, and I'm happy to set up a personal meeting here at Village Hall to address any concerns that anyone might have. I do have an upcoming meeting with the Port Jeff Station Quality of Life Task Force that will be held at Brookhaven Town Hall at the end of this month. So at our next meeting, I'll be able to report on any new happenings just over the railroad tracks. This task force was created back when the infamous bus stop incident occurred up there outside of the bowling alley, and it's been very successful at bringing the different aspects of the two communities together to help prevent any further incidents such as those, to help with quality of life issues and public safety and crime issues up there. So I'll be reporting on that meeting next month. With parking, we are going to be reinstating our managed parking to pre-pandemic status, which means managed parking will be on seven days a week from 12 noon to 11:00 PM, and that will be effective as of July 12th this month. And beautification of Uptown, I've started working with our Parks Department and our village gardener to add some beautification uptown. As things start happening up there, I think it's long overdue to add some, some flowers and some plantings and whatever else. I don't have any specifics yet. Meetings are in the works, and we are, I do have a date scheduled to walk up there and see exactly what we can do to start making things look a little better up there, to attract more developers, more businesses, and what have you. So if anybody has any ideas on that, please reach out to me. I'd be happy to bring that to our, our Parks Department and see what we can do there. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thanks, Kathy. And important to note, tonight on the agenda, earlier we ratified the second year of the municipal cooperation agreement between the school district and the Code Enforcement Bureau of the Village of Port Jefferson, so they can do routine inspections, drive-bys on the school campuses, and participate in, you know, any type of emergencies that are happening. It was something that Kathy was able to effectively get with the help of our legal department in cooperation with our school district, so thanks for that, and we were happy to renew that for a second term. The last couple of weeks, we've been doing a lot of work with direct conversations with Suffolk County Police Department and the State Liquor Authority on the heels of a tragic event that happened late one Friday evening, the wee hours of the morning, and in an effort to prevent any kind of other tragic incidences, we're very much, very concerned about the nightlife and the activity that happens in the village after midnight. And I've had some really great conversations, getting more support from Suffolk County. We have a dedicated foot patrolman now, Monday through Friday. You'll see Officer Murphy walking the street. He's either walking from 7:00 to 3:00 PM, or on the next week, he'll be at 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. He is solely to be designated on foot downtown. Great officer. He's introduced himself to me personally, so I'm hoping that he's going to actually take the time to go into businesses and have conversations and introduce himself. Of course, we still have the Whiskey Tour, which works directly hand-in-hand with our Code Enforcement Bureau, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, extended hours, two dedicated police officers, and they are doing a wonderful job as well. We did have a State Liquor Authority raid, I guess Friday night, and they went into three establishments, and they found two of the establishments had minor infractions that were written up, but there was one establishment that had three times the occupancy permitted by the fire marshal. So they reported to the State Liquor Authority and written up for the violations, and will, you know, have to be addressed in this court, and we're trying to make a strong statement And we're trying to make a strong statement that we will not tolerate any infractions serving, you know, alcohol to minors, or, you know, doing anything that puts our young kids at harm's way. Of course, in my conversations with Senator Palumbo's office and Councilwoman Han, Legislator Han's office, we talked about the impacts of the legalization of the cannabis, the impacts that we're having with the young kids who are experimenting now with probably products that are provided or taken home and not labeled properly. And, you know, it's sad to see some of the kids, you know, overwhelmed by these bags of gummy bears, or Inspector Elton can testify what, you know, what they're encountering in the field. And it's just added another level of wacky to what's already a really kind of, you know, excitable situation after midnight down in the village of Port Jefferson. So I'm really happy to see the results that we've had. There was also a DWI check down here on Saturday night, a lot of infractions, people driving under the influence. And so those will be ongoing throughout the summer. It's not a one-and-done. We're trying to send a very strong message to our establishments. We want to partner with you and help you provide good service and beverage and, you know, meals to our families. And after 12:00, we're hoping that you quiet down, and the young kids choose another destination to party. That's, and I will say that until I'm blue in the face. Along that line, in my conversation with Senator Palumbo, I brought to his attention that approximately six years ago, I worked with former Senator Laval on trying to get home rule on instituting a curfew. And so we are taking that legislation out and dusting it off, and it will be presented to other sister villages, who I understand are having the same challenges throughout Suffolk County and Nassau. And Mr. Palumbo is committed to resubmitting that to legislative session. We're going to try and see if we can get the Suffolk County Villages Officials Association on board with helping us. It would require a certain percentage of the village residents to do what we call a public referendum, and that would then give us the authority to actually usurp the State Liquor Authority, call a curfew, and close down establishments from serving alcohol after a certain hour. You know, I really kind of think that's in the community's best interest. After a certain hour, let's just say it's 2:00 in the morning, nothing good happens after 2:00 in the morning. So I'm committed to doing that, and hopefully I can put another feather in my cap and see if I can get that accomplished. On that note, I just really want to thank everybody for, we were sworn into office, Mr. Laux for his fourth term, Kathy Ann for her second, and I'll be serving my seventh term. And I'm just really happy to be here to continue service to this community, and I'm committed, whether it's day one or 2,556, I'm here on the job. I want to thank you, folks. And at that point, we're still waiting for Suffolk Police, but I'll open up to anybody else in the audience who has any kind of public concern or question. Yes, the gentleman in the back.
Just two questions.
Have to state your name and address for the record.
My V R 116 Wilson Road.
W B.
A V E R.
Thank you.
The foot patrol with Officer Murphy, was it only Monday through Friday? They weren't able to give us a foot patrol on Saturday when we have the higher traffic? Or was it?
No, because on Saturdays, we get the two dedicated Suffolk County Police Officers. They start in the mid to late afternoon, they go into the early morning hours.
Okay. Second question, has the village heard anything from either the Suffolk County Executive or anyone in the state regarding the potential bullet train that they're proposing to the federal bullet train proposal going to Boston, anything, because they're mentioning through news day that it would go from Port Jeff to Bridgeport?
Yep. I took a picture of that and sent it to Kathy Ann and said, "That'd be wonderful." More I talk about to other people, they're waiting to see if even that kind of funding would fly with a project like that. Plus, they also have Shoreham to kind of connect to, right up north of William Floyd Parkway. I don't know how a project like that, they would even fathom coming to Port Jeff. But, you know, they think of great ideas, and then the implementation is where they really. But no, it's a good question, and I thought that was only on the house of cards, that they were talking about a bridge or a tunnel, right? So.
Well, yeah, I think that the bridge from Port Jefferson to Connecticut has been talked about and not talked about for eons, and so I think this is new.
That's originally why 135 was built. 135 was supposed to be for a bridge across the Connecticut.
Right, and it dead-ended.
Yeah.
But I have my eye on that, so we'll definitely be sure if we hear anything to update.
Who else? Waiting for Suffolk County. I'm sorry, Amal, we asked you to attend the meeting.
Well, that's kind of to my point.
Yeah.
He's not here.
I can tell you, I did receive a message from our officer, John Astathiu, and he said he is stuck at a prior meeting. So he was the one appointed to come to tonight's meeting. He's almost, he's always here.
Yeah, they're always here.
Anyone here for the meetings, to start our meeting. So he apologized, and he said he was on his way. But I'm happy to, you know, translate any messages that you have. But, you know, we've had email conversations, so if you want to, yeah, if you want to state to the board, you know, what the issue is, and hopefully, you know, maybe we can talk it through and see what we can do.
I can stop now.
Yeah, yeah.
The issue is speeding, I guess throughout the village, but we live at 318 East Broadway, so where Oakwood intersects or is perpendicular, it's not an intersection with East Broadway, it's mostly traffic going eastbound. How anyone manages to do it, there's a stop sign five houses before our.
At Belter Road, correct?
Yeah, so we're East Broadway. People are doing 50, 60, there's somebody for 20 years, every night, 11:00 PM, you know, it gets really scary. And then this person might just go back and forth, all night long, you know, what he is doing is making it impossible to walk, you know, like law, I love this village, walking since the weather has improved. Now, you know, most of us are back, everybody's out. It's difficult enough to cross our street, it's almost impossible to go from our house to the other side. And I thought, maybe I could ask the village, like, you know, Venetian Bridge from our house to the other side of East Broadway. I don't know, because the only thing left for us to do is we get in the car, literally drive to the other side of the street, you know, and leave the car there. It's a bit stupid, but it's gotten so dangerous. And when I, the morning I emailed you, Kathy Ann, that was animal number 20. This one wasn't dead, so I didn't know what to do with it.
So, Amal, are you saying, is it, are you saying it's the same car?
No, that was an example. The point is, many people speed.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't know. So I called the police, tell me you can't do anything, call the village, and I called the village. I speak with the constables, who said, "They're not authorized to do anything," but C O P E, they've been here, and they've talked to us, called them, I called them. And I'm sorry, it's like the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. You go, "Why are you calling us?" Called the police. What am I supposed to do?
Wait, I'm sorry, you called the COPE officer?
Yes, multiple times, and they say that they, they're not responsible for the speeding throughout the village of Port Jefferson. Someone in the village just explained to me, someone from your office has gone into the village to, here during the town hall meeting, to say that you would assist. But they make it, they made it, not only did they make it very clear, they got a bit of, you know, irate with me.
And I'm surprised by that, because usually.
It had nothing to do with speeding in the village, so I don't know who to go to.
I used to live on a very busy street on Myrtle Avenue, and well before I was involved in village government, I had an issue with people blowing through the stop sign at High Street and Myrtle Ave. And when I called the Suffolk Police Department, I did the same thing. Called the code office, they said Suffolk Police, I called Suffolk Police, they sent me to COPE. When I did call COPE, they sent a car. They sent a COPE car to sit at that intersection on, you know, multiple days, and they did great. They wrote multiple tickets, and people got the message at that time that, you know, that was a trap there, and they needed to stop. So, and I know every time we have a COPE officer here to start our meetings, anytime there's a traffic issue, whether it's speeding, a light blocking the box, they always say, "Call COPE." So I'm surprised to hear that, but I will definitely address it with them, and I wish John was here, because he could tell you.
He told you, they said, "Call the village," and then he moved back, called COPE.
So I will specific, I'm going to call the COPE officer directly and see, you know, I'll work with them directly and see what we can do to get, at least get a patrol up there for a time. But obviously, it's not something that they can sit there, you know, every day forever. But we can definitely do that for a short-term solution, for a long-term solution. You know, I'm going to go up there, and I'll come to your house, and I want to see how far you are from the stop sign. There's another stop sign. It's not like that's a long road. That then goes around a corner, right?
No, it's, when you reach the top of East Broadway, there is a stop sign. You go on terrace to your left.
Right.
If you continue east, you need to pass through that. Somehow, they just got it from the stop sign all the way down East Broadway, and there are issues.
How do you feel, and I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not saying this is what we're going to do, but the rumble strips or a speed bump or, you know, one of those sort of things?
I've suggested those. I've been suggesting them for quite a few years. When I called the village, you know, various people tell me, "Well, you know, it's a residential neighborhood, you can't do X, Y, Z," which gets a bit frustrating. When I turn around, I go west on East Broadway, and go, "Ah, everything I suggested has been done westbound." But for some reason, and I'm sorry, the fact is, we've kind of been in the format section of the village, we have nothing to do with tourism. But we feel like.
So, no, I totally understand, and that's, it's terrible. I know how you feel with the pets and children in the area. So I'm going to come up there, I'll come this week, and, you know, just kind of observe to see where your house is, how it looks with the traffic pattern, stop sign, and then I'll bring back to the board some suggestions. Maybe Joe could come with me on that field trip and.
Can you, can you gentlemen remind me what the, what the guidelines are, what's required for a stop sign to be installed?
Sometimes it follows, depending upon where it is and how complicated the intersection is, or whether you need to have a traffic engineer to review it. Otherwise, it's a public hearing to install a stop sign on, if it goes code, they have a stop intersection.
Well, because at the top where you are, Amal, that's where the fork in the road is to continue right onto East Broadway or bear left to go to Oakwood. Am I correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so a lot of times when you're traveling east on East Broadway, a person will be making that left to go onto Oakwood, and it gets a little hairy.
It gets more than hairy. I mean, there's been so many accidents there.
Yeah. So we'll look at the intersection, because a second stop sign heading east may actually be an appropriate method to have people stop before they actually make that left to go to Oakwood, and then it would stop people, you know, it would be a short, you know, stop sign to stop sign, but that's going to slow everybody down.
You can always stop, surely, because I have also, coming up from the beach, you know, from East Beach, looking, looking east, trying to go west.
You're trying to see if anybody's.
Yeah, I think that's likely where a lot of the accidents come from as well, where if you're trying to see the blind and someone's whipping up coming east, that's a tricky thing. So an always-stop sign could be advantageous and.
Right, or just allowing, you know, the stop sign heading east and then the stop sign on Oakwood heading west, so that if you're on East Broadway heading east, you get, you get to go through.
Are you right on the corner?
It is, we're in the corner. It says, "He can drive."
Okay, got it.
What the village did.
We say, we won't use the term, but the guy who plants all the plants, on the right-hand side, you know.
Right, you're right opposite Oakwood.
Yeah, and she's got the long driveway.
It's an easement, before I get into trouble again. But actually, what happened years ago was somebody, that's 314 East Broadway, and I think the village put out the screaming sign, 25 miles per minute, you know, do 25 miles per, you know, that same night, that's when the sign was flattened. And I just went, I was walking, what the hell ran that over?
Somebody taking a turn too tight. Stan, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think when you're coming up Oakwood, I know I come out that way a lot, and you cannot see, well, that foliage, if you look to your left.
Right.
You cannot see cars coming up that road.
Right, so we would put a stop sign there.
Could be done with that foliage that's on that corner.
Yep, but again, I think that was the same corner that Rebecca was talking about.
Right, which is why I think just an always-stop is also the simplest thing so that drivers just know, get to this corner.
Everybody stops, and then it's like draw, draws, draws to see who goes first.
You also have Burke Roader coming out right there, so it's, that complicates things right off of Oakwood.
Burke Roadie?
Right on Oakwood.
Oh, yes.
It's a lot of stuff.
So you guys have a couple of people in the audience that can maybe look at the situation and get back to us with a recommendation, talk to Steve Gallagher, you know, if we have to do an accident report, you know, sometimes we go to Suffolk County, get an accident report. Based on the accident reports, they actually, that actually tells us more that this is a very dangerous area. So we're going to see what we can do to help calm traffic. Jennifer?
I go that way quite frequently. Every so often, you see an officer on Village Woods, I think that's the other road, that's right off of East Broadway, and that's definitely a deterrent, and maybe there's a way to bring a car in there in that section that will send a message.
Just move forward.
I have asked them, I mean, you know, welcome to this, because trimming the privet, for example, is, we're just taking our life and our tons, you know.
Right, right. Well, it's true that our Code Enforcement Bureau has no jurisdiction over speeding vehicles. We can't do really anything about it, so we can only look at traffic calming projects on our roadways, and whether stop signs, rumble strips, what are they called? Not speed bumps, speed tables. You know, we've been trying to implement a lot of those. The fire department hates every single one of them, because it prevents the fire trucks and the emergency vehicles from, you know, having their time to the scene, you know, dragged down. But that doesn't prevent us from implementing. And, you know, we have great partnership with Suffolk County, so we'll talk to them. Make sure you have the right person, we'll relay the message for you, and do what we can. We also have a speed trailer. Can we put the street speed trailer there?
Absolutely.
Yes, Bruce?
I'm just thinking out loud here, I don't know if we can do this, but what would be the possibility of having two code officers with speed guns that you would determine somebody is going too fast and communicate the information to the other code officer who would flag the person over at the very minimum? Tell them, can't do that?
Inspector Elton, would you like to comment on that?
No, see, you can't do that. You can't stop anybody.
Okay.
If you think not, we can absolutely put the speed trailer there. I mean, that's a very quick and easy short-term solution. We could probably, if I can get ahold of Fred, we can have that there tomorrow.
Trustee Stane, I have a question about the speed trailer. Is that recording the information?
No.
Is there any way to do that with that? I don't know. Okay, I'm just wondering.
Again, that's all under Suffolk County's jurisdiction.
Our speed trailer?
Recording and, recording and then sending the information to Suffolk.
Sure, well, that was the next proactive point that I was going to make, is that you can, if you can record the data and see that people are speeding regularly at a certain point, Suffolk might be interested in that data.
I mean, they are usually very good at just taking a resident's concern that they're speeding cars, and they'll send a COPE officer. If they send an officer there to do speed, speed patrol, and they're there for a certain period of time, and they see nobody speeding, of course, they're going to leave. But the minute they start seeing it, then they're going to set up more.
So I think. Interesting, show it to them for.
Show it to them for, you know, to see how bad it is.
Showing it, not for enforcement.
Correct, right, 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 yeah.
But I will, I'll just be loud, and I will make the phone calls necessary and get somebody there. We'll do that immediately, and we will get the speed trailer there immediately, and then in the meantime, we'll do a field trip and see what else we can, we can work on. Does that work?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm not against entering into an IMA with the county for speed cams. Said that five times to Supervisor Paul. That would solve everything. Get a lot of speeding tickets in the Village of Port Jefferson. Any comments from the public this evening? Jennifer?
I have a silly question for trustee, I have to say. With your gardens, how are you doing with the deer? Have you had any deer issues?
Thank you, that's a great, happy question to answer. No, because thank you to the village's support, the support from the bed, support from individuals and our fundraising. We have a deer fence around the garden, so all of our gardeners have quite a luxe experience. Each of the six-by-three beds have drip irrigation that runs two times a day without the gardeners having to do anything, and then they have a deer fence around the entire garden. So it is, and everything, and the soil is donated by Long Island Compost, so it is organic, and so our residents who are enjoying these beds are enjoying a gardening experience like no other that I have ever experienced myself. So really just so grateful for, you know, the community who made this happen, and we're really looking forward to continuing to develop the area. We've gotten comments from the neighbors of the park thanking us and everyone who made it happen, because it was, for anyone who's not familiar, this is, the garden is on Beach Street, and so it's sort of a little, it's a, what would you say, like a quarter acre, a third of an acre of parkland there?
Quarter.
Quarter acre, it's that.
Yeah, and so it's this tiny little piece of parkland right near the gravel yard, so very scenic, and so not, not the most desirable, didn't know what to do. There was a playground there a while ago, but wasn't the most desirable area for that. And so, you know, this is, the neighbors have seen this as a great improvement, you know, using the garden, and the garden committee, who has very dedicated, worked very hard to make this happen, will look for, you know, this winter. make this happen, will look for, you know, this winter to plan for maybe making a compost area, a community compost project at the site, as well as native plantings to feed animals other than deer, hopefully, you know, sort of natural bird feeders and other things like that. So we're...
Bees.
What's that?
Bees.
Bees, exactly. So, yeah, feeding our pollinators, and which will also help the gardener's crops as well. So, yeah, it's, we actually, a gardener sent me a picture of a deer resting outside of the fence, and I think they were trying to do the calculations of like whether or not they could triangulate and jump over, but it's an eight-foot-high fence, so I don't, I mean, we have some Olympic deer around here, but hopefully they won't make it.
Good question. Anybody else? Questions, comments, concerns? Well, thank you for coming out to the first meeting of the new budget year. Next meeting is August 2nd. Stay tuned.
July 19.
I'm sorry, July 19, 3:30 in the afternoon. You can come and observe. There's no public participation at that meeting, but we always try and help you out whenever we can. But the next public meeting is August 2nd, until further notice. Grant Bar, and no public hearings scheduled? Okay, great. Motion to adjourn. Trustee Laux, seconded by Cassane, on favor. Aye. Thank you. Be safe getting home.